Thank you. Pam, if you would read the mission statement, please.
The Thompson School District will be a school district that empowers, challenges, and inspires students, faculty, staff, parents, school leaders, and community members to learn, achieve, and excel.
Thank you. First up on tonight's agenda is adoption of the agenda, and I will entertain a motion to adopt the printed agenda.
So moved.
Second? It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as printed. Are there any changes? Hearing none. Wendy, if you would please call the roll.
Paul Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Vista Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Jeff Swante?
Aye.
Thank you. We go to approval of the, oops, approval of the minutes from April 3rd, 2019. And I will entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Are there any corrections? No? Wendy, if you would please call the roll.
Paul Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Vista Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz, no, sorry. It's my fault. No, I was right. Barbara Cruz.
Yeah.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swante?
Aye.
Okay, and those minutes are approved. Thank you. Public participation is the first portion of our meeting tonight. Dr. Schaefer, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Thompson School District Board of Education. Good evening. First, I want to thank the Town of Berthoud and Berthoud High School for hosting us this evening. It's always great to come down and hold a couple of our board meetings down here. Immediately prior to this Board of Education meeting, we had an opportunity to meet with members of the Berthoud Town Council, as well as the city manager, and we were able to engage in a variety of topics of mutual interest. And it's always good to have a really strong collaborative partnership between our entities. So we thank them and we appreciate their support. So as you recall, last week, we had kind of an interesting week where we had to actually cancel school due to a safety issue which overtook the Denver metro area. And it was a very unique situation. I wanted to just provide a real special thank you and shout out to our law enforcement partners. So the Laramie County Sheriff, as well as the Loveland Police Department, they partnered with us from the very genesis, from the very beginning of the situation. And even when the issue resolved, the following day, when school was back in session, both the Sheriff's Department and the Loveland PD had increased presence in our schools, really just to provide a support and sense of security and safety. So I appreciate the efforts of law enforcement. I also appreciate the efforts of our schools. I think our building leadership, our teachers, staff, just did a great job during some, just a very unique situation. So we appreciate that. This week, I completed my final series of student advisories. So I started three different student advisory groups this year. An elementary advisory, which is composed of fifth graders, two from every fifth, every elementary in the district. A middle school advisory, which is comprised of two middle school students from our district, and then a high school student advisory, also two high school students from all schools in our district. The purpose of these forums provide just an opportunity to leverage student voice. Kids, our students are able to give us direct feedback around the work that we're doing, suggestions, input, just around issues that they identify. Sometimes senior leadership and staff will come to students, asking them for feedback, and then the students also have a venue and platform to share their feedback as well. Today, actually, three of you had an opportunity to join and really hear feedback from our high school kiddos, and they don't hold back. They have plenty to say, and they are very positive about some of the things we're doing, and they also had some just, some good think abouts for us. And just some topics of all the groups, I mean, anything from school schedules, we talked about the delayed start time, grading systems, mental health concerns, I mean, you name it, a whole myriad of issues. And these kids really, they stand out, they do a great job representing the voice of our students in the district. So we appreciate that. This Thursday, Stansbury Elementary will be hosting an open house. So that's tomorrow night. It will be held from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. There's a formal program at 5:00 p.m., but the open house starts at 4:00. And it's part of their closure ceremonies. It's a way to really celebrate the school, the community. Alumni will be there, current students, current staff, and it's just a great opportunity to honor just a phenomenal school. So that will be tomorrow, again, from 4:00 to 6:00, with the formal program at 5:00 p.m. And finally, this Friday, I'll be hosting my second business leader community coffee. This will be held at the Loco Artisan Coffee House in Loveland from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. This was something I started to just better engage our business community and really hear from them about how the school district and local businesses can, just what are those mutual areas of interest, and maybe ways that we can potentially partner. So it's just a way to outreach into the community. So my first one was last month here in Berthoud, and then this month, I'll be in Loveland. So that's this Friday from 10:00 to 11:00. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Schaefer. Next up are board committee reports, and I think I'll just start to my right with Jeff and just go down the way here.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, Pam?
Let's see. I serve on the Thompson Education Foundation Board, and as most of you know, we had the educator appreciation breakfast on April 3rd, and it was awesome. We honored top educators across the district, and Mike Pinterak from Loveland High School was the winner of Educator of the Year Award, and gets a two-year lease on a brand-new Buick car to drive. That's exciting. And then the Loveland Classic was on Saturday. That raises funds for programs, mainly in the early childhood programs. And then in additions, gosh, it's been a really busy month. I was able to attend to several walkthroughs with Dr. Schaefer on various elementary schools, middle schools. We also hosted Congressman Jonah Goose at Loveland High School and Thompson Valley High School, and then we met with him in the boardroom. Got to kind of share some thoughts and ideas between the federal government and our local, local happenings there. Attended, observed the teacher negotiations, attended and participated in the community forum for the new early childhood center and the Career Tech Ed Center. This morning, we were at the high school student advisory group. Dr. Schaefer mentioned that. That might have been my favorite, favorite thing of all time. They were phenomenal kids and had great insights and ideas. So that's a few of the things happening.
Thanks. If you've noticed, we've got a lot going on in the district after the passage of the mill and the bond, and the various projects that are going on, the Early Childhood Center, the Career Tech Ed Center, the new school, the pre-K8 new school that's going to be out on the east side of, or the east side of the district, all have design advisory groups that various board members participate in. And I sit on the, they're called DAGs, Design Advisory Groups. So I sit on the pre-K8 DAG, and I've been attending a handful of those meetings. And what that is, it's really interesting, because what it is, is it starts as a very conceptual, like, what do we want, what's the philosophy of what we want this school to be like? And then as the meetings go on successively, it narrows more down into what do we want, you know, do we want the noisy part of the school to be in the middle of the school, or the side of the school, or where do we want the entrance to be, or what do we want, what kind of look do we want the building to have? And so we're moving through that with the pre-K8 Design Advisory Group, and we're starting to get down into some of the more specifics. So that's pretty exciting. And the other thing that I did this month that was new to me, that was also very exciting, was a meeting that was actually called together by the El Pumar Foundation. And they've been doing some funding of in-school mental health counselors. And they've got a couple of mental health counselors in our, in our schools, and on a sort of a grant basis. And they, the folks from the foundation and the folks from Fort Lupton, which also is in a similar kind of program, came up and talked about how those programs are working out and what that could be in the future. And with all the emphasis on student mental health, it was very interesting to hear, to hear from those folks. And that's all I have today. Barbara?
I've spent a little bit of time this past month investigating the additional pieces that we'll be looking at to add to our leaders program, the foundational piece. And I visited some of the schools and observed some of the programs that are currently in use, just to get a feel for where we'll go with that. I serve on the DAG for Early Childhood Center, so we've spent a lot of time with that group, working on what it might possibly look like. There've been breakfasts, some fundraising breakfasts that I've participated in, the Alternative to Violence, and the Community Outreach, which Thompson was really well represented yesterday, at that breakfast yesterday. I attended also the student-teacher reception that I thought was really, was pretty neat. They had, unfortunately, a lot of the student teachers weren't there, so they had a lot of one-on-one from the staff and be able to, like, ask questions about what interviews might be like and all, or how they need to be prepared. And then went over to the boundary meeting at Loveland High last night. That was interesting. I mean, it was just real open and casual, and I guess I was relieved at that point. And then this morning, it was really fun to watch those high school kids just tell us what they thought. It was fun.
No report.
And Mark?
So the DAG committee met for the last time this year, and they're aggressively preparing a report, which we will be seeing, I believe, in the next month. And so that was, yeah, neat to see that work wrap up. It's incredible how much data they gather and how much data they go through to put together those recommendations. The other thing that I wanted to mention is I went to a town hall last weekend and was pleased to see Shannon Byrd, a Democrat representative, and Hugh McKean, a Republican, and they answered a bunch of questions from the community. And I was really surprised to see just how many bills this year are going to impact education. And so that's something for us all to keep our eye on as those start going through, and especially the ones that pass.
Okay, thank you. Next up, public comments, item 4.3. Wendy, do we have, we've got a couple. Okay, so let me have, Pam will read the ground rules, and Paul will keep time. We don't have the fancy lights here, so he'll just give you one of these when your three minutes up.
We'll get out the hook, because the board wants to hear the viewpoint of the public. Excuse me, boy, I'm choking tonight. We have decided to schedule time during the regular board meetings for comments from citizens. The board has set aside an unlimited time for public participation, prior to the business portion of each meeting on the first and third Wednesday of the month, or the fourth, if we have a cancellation. The time for each speaker is limited to three minutes, and each individual will only be recognized once. The board will not respond to comments or questions.
Great, thanks.
Great. So we have Karen Cookshousen.
And I'll just hold up my one finger, just a one-minute warning, doesn't it?
Karen Cookshousen, my address is on file. Good evening, Dr. Schaefer, Madam President, and members of the board. I am speaking to you tonight for a few reasons. The first is to personally invite you to attend our Stansbury Open House tomorrow night from 4:00 to 6:00. We will have tours of the school and a social time from 4:00 to 5:00, and then a program in the gym from 5:00 to 6:00. We are celebrating 38 years of Stansbury's success. I am honored to have been a part of that for 22 years. We have remained Stansbury strong despite the fact that we are being closed and want to celebrate our school. If you can't join us in person, the event will also be on Facebook Live. Second, I'm here to talk to you about the name of our school and what that means to all of us. Our school is named after Claude Stansbury, a former superintendent in our district. Dr. Stansbury remained active in our school for many years and often volunteered to read with our students. This was a highlight of the day for us, but especially for those fortunate students whose lives he touched. Dr. Stansbury and his wife both played a critical role in education in Loveland for many years. It is my hope that his name will continue on with the building. In 2006 and 2007, as part of our 25th anniversary celebration, a former student, Josh West, worked on earning his Eagle Scout badge. He chose to help make over the exterior of the building and make it more inviting and up-to-date. He and his family, as well as numerous school and community volunteers, worked tirelessly to achieve this. Berms was removed, and a beautiful brick falcon was installed at the entrance of our school. Each brick was sold and then engraved as part of a living history of some of the people that love Stansbury Elementary. This is a treasured part of our building. When we first heard of Stansbury closing, the number-one question I heard from former students, staff members, and community, community members was, "What about our bricks?" We hope that this, too, will remain with the building. It would be a shame to lose part of our history. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kelsey Roberts.
Thank you. Kelsey Roberts, 4950 Malibu Drive, Berthoud. This was intended to be towards the Town of Berthoud's Board as well as to you, and I don't think we have the Town Board of Berthoud, so just wing it. I wanted to thank the Port Committee and the Town of Berthoud for listening to the citizens of our community with regards to having a pool included in the future recreation center at Wagner Farm Park. I am thrilled that we will maintain a place for the children and adults to enjoy and exercise during the hot summer months. However, I would like the Town Board to consider partnering with the Thompson School District to build a pool that is appropriate for competition all year long. Northern Colorado is the sixth most popular location for swimming in the nation, according to a 2015 survey by USA Swimming. This was based on the percentage of active swimmers, number of swim clubs, and top-level swimmers from the area relative to the population. Also, I found several articles showing that interesting Colorado age group swimming is increasing, having more than doubled in the last 10 years. This correlates with our local area, considering Laramie County has enough swimmers to warrant four year-round swimming clubs and several summer recreation clubs. Having a year-round competitive pool in Berthoud would provide a safe opportunity for our children and adults to learn to swim, stay in shape, and support a healthy environment and a greater sense of community. Currently, our local swimmers must travel to one of Loveland's pools for their workouts, where space is limited due to high demand for workout lanes. And there are companies who design removable bubble domes to cover outdoor pools in the winter. Swimming is a lifelong sport benefiting all ages and body types. It is low-impact aerobic exercise that works the entire body, increases flexibility, improves asthmatic symptoms, reduces the risk of type 2 diabetes, helps with arthritis, improves mental health, boosts metabolism, and has been proven to have anti-aging effects. It's even good for expectant mothers. Team competition benefits include improving social well-being, learning goal orientation and team-building skills, improving memory function and thinking, building confidence, burning more calories than jogging. And according to Dr. John Mullin in an article for Swimming World Magazine, "Kids Who Swim Become Active Adults." Researchers at the University of South Carolina, who followed over 40,000 men for 32 years, discovered that those who swam had a 50% lower death rate than runners, walkers, or non-exercisers. Our town would greatly benefit by creating a partnership between the school district and the Town of Berthoud to facilitate building a competitive pool. Thank you for your consideration. The benefits far outweigh any negative factors. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. That brings the public, public participation portion of the meeting to a close. We will move on to the action consent agenda. We will take those up together, unless anyone from the board wishes to remove items from the consent grouping. I will read them off, and then I will have Pam read the gifts and donations. And if anybody wants to remove something, you already know you do?
I do.
Okay, which one?
5.3.
5.3, you want to remove, move it down to a discussion item, then?
Yep.
Okay. So we will take that out, we will renumber 5.3, and then we will make that 7.1 Head Start. I'm looking over here, Wendy, and you're not over there, sorry. I'm so used to looking that direction. I'm like, where is she? Head Start Self-Assessment. Start Self-Assessment. Okay, so that will be our first discussion item, then. Okay, so we are left with, on the action consent agenda, we are left with item 5.1, Approval of Personnel Extra-Duty Coaching Recommendations, 5.2, Approval of Gifts and Donations, and now 5.3 is now Approval of Bond-Funded Custodial Equipment Purchase. Anybody else? Okay, Pam, if you would read the gifts and donations, please.
Absolutely. We have four gifts to thank the donors for tonight. The first one, the recipient is the Restorative Practices throughout the district. They received two HP laptop computers and a portable printer totaling $1,700. And the donor was the Restorative Justice Community Council, so thank you to them. The next one, the recipient is Destination Imagination Program throughout the district. It's a $5,000 check, which is awesome. And Destination Imagination is kind of like Odyssey, the mine for us old folks. Didn't have Destination Imagination back in the day. The donor for that $5,000 is Keysight Technologies Foundation. It's a great gift. The third one was HP switches made to the Support Services Center. I'm sure they're very excited about this. Aurora Public Schools donated it to us, and the original value of these switches was $10,000, $10,367. I have a feeling they're not worth that much, or Aurora Public Schools might not have given them to us. The fourth one, the recipient is Turner Middle School. They received $2,000 from Eric and Chris D. Petrowski, so thank you to the Petrowskis.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items 5.1, 5.2, and 5.3. So moved. And a second, please?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the action consent agenda items 5.1, 5.2, and 5.3 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Wendy, if you would please call the roll.
Paul Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Vista Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swante?
Aye.
All right, and those pass six to zero as well. We will move down to action items. We have two. 6.1 is Approval of Middle School Math Instructional Materials Recommendation. Board, you'll remember that this was presented one time. This is sort of the second presentation on this, to see if we have any further questions before we take a vote on it tonight. And do we, oh, there she is, Dawn Huckabee, okay?
[inaudible]
I think you're off, maybe.
Oh, sorry. Is it not? Oh, it is really not now. Wow. Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer, Dawn Huckabee, Chief Academic Officer, wanted to give you an update of where we were with the recommendation for Big Ideas Mathematics for our middle school program. As we, as requested at the meeting on April 3rd, we placed the materials in both the Berthoud Public Library, as well as the Loveland Public Library, to get feedback from community members. And so I wanted to give you a little bit of what we, what we heard. We received nine responses between the two locations, and the primary feedback was positive in that the materials were, seemed to be, for parents, they looked at them and said, you know, this seems to be the work that I would want my students to do. They liked the idea of having the blended, as well as the textbook options. The questions that came from, from the, were feedback was really around implementation. So thinking about how are we going to implement these in ways that foster collaboration, foster critical thinking, foster that opportunity to make sense of mathematics and in an inquiry-based response. And also, I need to get my glasses. Cost was also identified as a concern, and just sheer volume and the cost that it's going to be to do that for the full district. And another concern that came up was that there was only the one option to review. So as we move forward in future adoptions, we will take the two or three that we are considering, get those out into the public before we make a final recommendation, and ensure that we have that feedback from the public moving forward. So with that, our recommendation tonight is to still move forward with the adoption of Big Ideas Mathematics for grades 6 through 8, with the Accompany Professional Development Plan that we discussed back beginning of April, that will, will address some of these concerns that were articulated about what is the pedagogy that goes with the, the materials, because materials are one part of the instruction. I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Dawn? Mark?
So I'm looking at the instructional program costs, and it's, it's got, it's broken into two columns. On the one, we've got the one-year-only program costs. On the right, seven-year bundle program costs. And so what does the recommendation include?
Our recommendation is to do the seven-year bundle, because that will be the most cost-effective way for the district to move forward.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the adoption of the Middle School Math Instructional Materials, which is Big Ideas.
So moved.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to move forward to approve the purchase of the Big Ideas Middle School Math Instructional Materials. Any further discussion? Wendy, call the roll, please.
Paul Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Vista Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Jeff Swante?
Aye.
All right, thank you. That passes unanimously as well. And you can probably just stay right there, Dawn, because you have the next item, which is item 6.2, Approval of Policy FFA Memorials. And if you want to remind us what we were doing, we had that presented a little bit ago, and now it's coming back around.
Yes, this policy came to you as a first read in February, and the policy is located in the facilities section of the board policy. And this is a policy that will create consistency across the district when there are requests for memorials, donations, and recognitions. And so the policy articulates what is a short-term memorial that might occur in, whenever there might be a loss of a student or a staff member at a building, and then what would be the process for moving forward for a more permanent response. And so per the board's direction, we held a community meeting on March 28th to gather any further input regarding this policy. We had one staff member who was there, who happens to be one of our team members who's on our psychological response team, and her feedback was that this seemed to be very in line with, with what effective practices would be from a social, psychological standpoint. And that was the only feedback that we received at the time. So our recommendation, recommendation tonight is to, for you to approve the policy as was presented in February.
Questions for Dawn? All right, I will entertain a motion to approve Policy FFA Memorials. So moved. And a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Policy FFA Memorials. Is there any further discussion on this? All right, Wendy, if you please call the roll.
Paul Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Vista Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Jeff Swante?
Aye.
Thank you, and that passes unanimously as well.
Thank you.
All right, now we move on to discussion items, and we'll start off with the item that we pulled from consent, the Head Start Self-Assessment. And I'm hoping Lamb is here, because I'm guessing that you're going to have a question or two. So, Dr. Banks, if you want to either ask a question or...
Yep, and this is just more, so I can get clarity. I just know that, you know, our mental health efforts are ramping up in a very high priority in the district, and that we're trying to move towards having a very effective systemic, system-wide program. And there were several parts in your, your plan that dealt with mental health, and some programs and some things that I wasn't necessarily totally informed about and understand totally. So really, my question is, can you just kind of walk us through that mental health part of your plan and give us some details on what you're planning on doing?
Sure. So I'm Lamb Carroll. I'm the Early Childhood Administrator for the Thompson School District. So in regards to the mental health plan, I referenced several things in there, and that's true. So I'm going to provide a little background with what those are. One of the things that we focused on recently is a program called Prevent, Teach, Reinforce. And that program is really a proactive approach about defining your expectations, then taking the time to teach it, and then reinforcing it periodically throughout the day and as, again, as needed. So it's very similar to what you would hear with positive behavior intervention supports or, or the similar programs. This one is targeted specifically for early childhood, and it has some very positive results. And so we've used that with five pilot classrooms this last year, and we're going to implement it with all our other programs this year. One of the things that we're looking at this year also is with the multi-tierred systems of support for the district. We are a P3 pilot for the Colorado Department of Education, and so one of the things that we're... And so one of the things that we're doing is we're taking a look at the lay of the land. And that's just taking a, a snapshot picture of what we can do. In particular, the area we're focused on is looking at the community piece. So what can we do to help support our community partners within our program to help share practices outside of our program and inside the program? So that goes back to the, our pyramid practices. And so I should talk about what pyramid practices are. Pyramid practices are the Positive Behavior Intervention Support in the early childhood version. So if you're familiar with PBAS, it has a triangle with our tier one, tier two, and tier three. And those tier ones really focus on, and we're right now working on making sure that our universal interventions are in place now. And we're taking a look at our tier two and tier three. And in particular, that re-references what other tools are we providing teachers with, to help students with different needs? So we're trying to differentiate how we can support the kids in the program. So the other thing we're looking at also is we, we've done a lot of work with Heather Forbes. She actually came and spoke to our group two years ago. And that was to provide foundation for trauma informed practices in the classroom. And what we found really, that resonated with most teachers is that it reframed their thinking about what do kids come into the classroom when they already have trauma? And more importantly, how does it come out in the classroom when they react to different things? And so it's really changed the way of when a, a student reacts out in the classroom, it's not a question of are they doing that to get, to be in conflict with the teacher? But really, it's a way of saying, what can I do to help you to get past this? Because really, our focus in early childhood at this point is we want them to develop their social emotional self regulation and their executive function, because once they can do that, they can focus on learning in the classroom.
So can you kind of paint a picture for me or picture for us of, of the type of students that you're seeing come into, into the system that's prompting us to pay so much more attention to this?
Sure. What are we seeing? Well, I think recently, we've had a lot more students that have come into the program because of early intervention in Laramie County. Laramie County has increased the amount of kids that they refer to our program. So by virtue of that, our numbers have gone up. The state had identified that early intervention was not sending enough kids to our programs. And that's just not us. That's also in Pooter and surrounding other districts too. So we have more kids coming in with more significant needs. And then also, for this particular, we've noticed the trend last couple of years, that a lot of kids are coming in without the typical experiences that you would expect a preschooler to have prior to coming to, into preschool or anything. Among them, that we have parents that typically request parenting classes. We have parents that have said that, you know, they come from split homes and lots of different things. And then also, we have a lot of, an increase in homeless population and foster placements. So that does impact what happens in the classroom. And I should say that it's not, program wide, it shows up in like three to four or five students per classroom. What we're doing is we're ramping up to make sure that we can meet that need if the need increases as we move forward.
Can I ask one more question? It's the last question. So I'm hearing you say some of these things might align with some systems you already have in place.
Correct.
And that was kind of my question. So are these things that will be feed right up into kindergarten and continue on? Or are these things that are going to be setting a foundation that we need to follow up with kindergarten for, and see that it's...
Yeah, yeah, that's a great question. So with the, the work that the district is doing around MTSS right now, it's a perfect time to align the systems that we have in pre-K that go into kindergarten and beyond that. So that's what this work is affording us right now, is giving us an opportunity to step back. And with the addition of the Director of Student Success, I feel that we can create some systems that make the transition from pre-K to K and even beyond that much smoother.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. And we do need to approve this then tonight, so I will, correct?
Yep.
So I will take a motion to approve the Head Start Self Assessment. So moved. In a second, please.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Head Start Self Assessment. Is there any further discussion? Wendy, if you would call the roll, please.
Paul Banks.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Lori Visda Ward.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Dave Levy. Mark Sutter.
Aye.
Jeff Swanty.
Aye.
Okay, and that passes unanimously as well. Thank you. All right, next up is under discussion items, New Vision Charter School renewal. Dawn?
I'm filling in pinch hitting for Gordon here tonight. I think I can do it. So at your last meeting, I believe you received the charter agreement. And it has the red line information as to what are the changes. And just wanted to kind of give you an update where we are around that. The, that, those recommended changes went to New Vision Charter School. To date, we have not received any comments from them as to any changes they would suggest in the, in the document. It will be going to, it's currently slated to be a discussion item at their board meeting next week on Monday, the twenty ninth. And we anticipate that they will likely adopt it at, at their meeting. To just call out what the, what the changes are in this document, number one is changes the term. So it, it adds now another five years, starting in the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty school year to the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. It also identifies and makes the change from no child left behind reference from a federal level to the Every Student Succeeds Act. There are also changes relative to current practice for students with disabilities and how we respond to, to our students who are, who would be at New Vision. And those changes that you see reflect current practice, changes in law, as well as they align with the provisions that, or the language that you approved for Loveland Classical, I believe it was April third. And then lastly, there is a added language about data privacy. And, and this is in reference to district practice as well as state law that when they have vendors that they use that would utilize student data, that they must go through the same process that we do as far as gathering a data privacy agreement, data privacy agreement from those vendors. So I'll be happy to take any questions. Our recommendation will be for you, this is a discussion for today. And we would then be bringing it back at your May fif, May first meeting to have approval for it.
Barb and Paul, I just want to ask a question about the charter school process, I guess. And I was curious about, I think it was eight point six, where it talks about their donations and gifts. Is that something that is just specific to their board? Or is that something that we ever see? So just because it's an entity of itself, they, or do we get to, are we ever made aware of what those gifts and donations are that they receive? Like we share always what we have?
That's a great question for Gordon. So I will make note of that and ask Gordon to get back to you on that and get it back to the whole board. As I read that particular section, I know Gordon, as he looked through, I mean, he's like read it top to bottom. He didn't see anything of concern. I mean, this, it looks like that they are to tell us when they receive any donation of more than two thousand five hundred.
And I did never see it, it was...
Eight point what?
Six point six.
Eight point six.
Six, six, I was curious about that. I really truly did go through this because it's new to me still, the whole process. And then I had one more that totally blew me away, was the nine, ten, one about our teachers taking a year of leave to go work. Is that what, so did I read it correctly that way?
I will have to defer that one to Dr. Severs.
Which one's that, nine point ten?
There was something about...
It's about the district teacher leave of absence from the district.
Yeah, and I was like, do they really do that?
So basically, that's similar to a policy that we have in the MOU that a teacher, a non-provocation teacher can apply for LOA. And then the Board would approve that.
To work at, to go to work at the charter school? Or is that from, because that's the way I read it. I might have read it totally wrong, but I was just curious.
Yeah, there's, there's different policies that we have around that of when a teacher can leave our district and go somewhere else. Because there's three, three different reasons.
Okay, that makes sense now.
Yeah.
So it's not like a separation then?
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
Meaning if somebody's teaching abroad, so, so we would recommend to the Board to approve something like that. If, if there's family issues related to FMLA, then, then there's an opportunity for, for us to do that. So our, our internal policy is we just make sure that if a teacher's requesting an LOA, that they're not working in another district. So pulling a salary is what, what we monitor. And those are the conversations I have with teachers when they submit that to Human Resources.
Okay, thank you.
My question, so I may be getting my processes mixed up. So prior to renewing these things, does, do we go through a school review and evaluation process, looking at their achievement, looking at their curriculum?
Yes, yes. We have done that. So every one of the department leads has, has a section. And in Learning Services, we have a lot of sections that we've gone through. We've had conversations with the school about where there were areas of, everything came out as a, on the rubric we use, it's levels one through four with three being meets. And everything was three or better, so a three or a four. And even with the threes, we gave them some opportunities for, to, to grow in. And so, yes, we've, we have done that.
Okay. And that, that doesn't need to come in front of the Board. I, I see like that, it had to come in front of the Board.
It seems like we've seen that in the past, that report, like, not report card, but that scorecard.
We can get that to you.
For Loveland Classical.
Yeah, maybe it was at Loveland Classical, or it might have been last, last go around or something.
It was supposed to, that was just a nice to, I don't, I don't...
Yeah, but if you could, if, if we could have that, that would be great.
Yes, we will get that to you for your meeting next week.
Any other questions? All right.
All right, thank you.
Next is item seven point two, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee Presentation. And I believe we have the Chair and the Co-Chairs, I guess they are, right? And Todd?
Yes, good evening, Madam President, Board of Education, Dr. Schaefer, Todd Piccone, Chief Operations Officer. Yes, with me tonight is Cecil Gutierrez and Brendan Willis. And they are going to give a update of the Citizen Bond Oversight Committee that was formed just shortly after the passage of the bond. So from there, I'll let the Chair, which is Cecil, and Vice Chair take it on from him.
Thank you, Todd. Cecil Gutierrez, and I am the Chair of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee.
My name is Brendan Willis, I'm the Vice Chair.
And we are here this evening to present, present the first report to the Board of Education on the activities of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. And just like every other body, we narrowed it down, we call ourselves CBOC. So if you hear CBOC, that's, that's us. I want to first personally commend the School Board for taking the bold step for setting up these, the two committees as part of the bond issues. I think that's a very bold step, especially when I outline for you here the purpose of these, of these committees. And I'm going to specifically be talking about CBOC. CBOC has three main purposes. One is to provide independent review of all of the materials and the bond expenditures. It is intended to provide high level of accountability to the community. And third, and I think the boldest step, is provide independent communication, independent communication on behalf of the Board to the citizens. That's pretty bold. I think that's a pretty broad step because you, you all know that as citizens, we will be reporting out to the community what we see that you all are doing. Right now, we're giving you all a pluses at this point. Wanted to tell you about the membership of the committee. The committee was set up, now I have to get my glasses. The membership was set up specifically from four different areas. The first area is the representatives from the community areas. Loveland, Berthod, and then the surrounding areas around those two main cities. The community area representatives are, for Loveland, Chad Walker. For Berthod, Eric McDermid. Surrounding area, Meg DeClement. Surrounding area, Brendan Willis, our Vice Chair. We also have two members from the community who have backgrounds in, in finances and financial, and can really dig into budgets and those kinds of things. Those two representatives for the community are Richard Barton and Lori Anderson. We also have two Thompson School District Parents, Kim Melville Smith and Neil Spooner. Then there are eight community members at large, citizens at large. Myself, Bill Brunick, Therese Newlin, Peter Peterson, Roger Whittleman, Dan Tron, Robert Herman. And currently, we have a vacancy that we hope to fill very soon. The structure of the committee, we meet bimonthly with special, excuse me, with special meetings being called as necessary. All of our meetings, all of our minutes are on the Thompson School District website. So all of our meetings are open to the public. We welcome public to, to attend and hear some of the same information that we do. The Chair and the Vice Chair will be elected annually. The Chair and the Vice Chair will develop the agendas with staff. At every one of our meetings, there will be an agenda, a point in our agenda where any committee member can ask staff to bring back any information. And, and then if they're, all of a sudden, get a brainstorm sometime between our meetings, the, any member is encouraged to send me an email and with plenty of time for staff to be able to develop the information. And, and we will add any materials that are needed to our agendas based on that. The Chair and the Vice Chair facilitate all of the meetings. And it is the role of staff to bring all of that and present the data and, and to get down into the, as many of the weeds as we desire. We try to stay high level, but on occasion, we have a tendency, just like every Board, to get down into the weeds a little bit. But they, that, what I wanted to tell you is, is that the Thompson District staff during the, the meetings that we have already had have been just superb in, in giving all of, all of us some very detailed information on, on all of the requests that we have had. So I want to thank staff and, and really want you all to know that, that your staff is, at this point, has done a terrific job for us. The quorum for our meetings is fifty percent of the membership. Votes on all action items just requires a simple majority of the members present. And then we will be reporting quarterly to you. Tonight, I'm going to report on some of the progress that we have made. And because we are just now getting started, the progress is going to be very short. My presentation won't be the hour and a half I promised Wendy. So far, we have elected the Chair and the Vice Chair. We have had an opportunity to review the scope and the purpose of the committee. And, and everyone is pretty well understanding of that scope and purpose. We have had an opportunity to review the entire budget for, for the bonds, and, and it is impressive. We have also reviewed the total plan and all of the encumbrances that have been made to date. We have reviewed the timelines. And I, I have to say again that the, the staff have made, has made it very easy and understandable. And the graphs that they have provided for us have been exceptional to be able to understand the timelines. The committee had also asked after the first meeting for us to be able to review the district's purchasing policies and procedures. We have done some of that. And at our next meeting, we will be continuing some addition, additional discussion on those procedures and policies. We have held an initial discussion on the Board premium. And again, from my own personal point of view, I have to commend the Board and, and Dr. Schaefer and his staff on the fact that you were able to sell the bonds at a premium and to bring the, those additional dollars to the district. And, and we think that is, that's a really terrific opportunity for the district to get ahead on some, have the curve on some issues that we have faced in the past. We've had some initial discussions and reviewed some of the funds that are available from the bond premium. I had hoped to be able to present some of the ideas and some of the suggestions and, and maybe even some, present to you with some suggestions from the committee. Unfortunately, Mother Nature preempted our, our meeting that we were supposed to have prior to your meeting. And so my presentation is a little light in that area tonight. But what we, on the early discussion of the, of the bond premium, we, we looked at the appropriateness of the use of the premium on the bonds based on what the bond language and, and how the bond language was, was written. And so we, we have taken a look at that and had a discussion on that. Some of the early ideas on the use of the bond premium and... Some of the early ideas on the use of the bond premium, and we will be rescheduling our meeting, and some of the discussions that we'll be having on that will be, we have asked staff to bring back, back in 2016, when the bond, that bond issue came forward, we had a list, the district had developed a list and a long list of things that were going to be taken care of, and then in 2018, that long list was pared, and so we've asked to have staff bring those 2016 lists back to us, and then we've also asked them to bring back to us a list of some priorities that have come up since we did that 2016 election, and some of the things that maybe didn't make, make it on to the 2018 election, but have since become priorities, and so we're going to be reviewing those lists. The other suggestion is, is that maybe, you know, we need to hold some of the funds back in reserve so that we can take a look and see what happens as some of the bond projects move forward through the process of being bid out. Community outreach is one of the main functions, one of the three purposes of the committee. We have had very few opportunities to do community outreaches from the committee itself, but we have had some suggestions. Some of the suggestions are that we would have some regular guest editorials to try, in all of the newspapers in all of the areas, that includes the four major newspapers in Berthoud, Johnstown, Loveland, and Fort Collins, and even possibly even in Longmont, because we know we go down into there, so trying to have regular guest editorials, and then making presentations to groups. Those are suggestions, the committee has not come up with a definitive plan on how to do that, and I think that, like every other group, we're going to find, that we're going to find some challenges in how to get the word out, and even though we have, we have, everything we have put out there is on the School District's website, people don't necessarily go there, so it's going to be a challenge for us to try to figure out how to do that community outreach effectively. We want to commend the staff on some of their activities, and the district on some of their activities on community outreach. The flyer that went down to every citizen in all of the district, that four-page flyer was extremely informative. I have used that and carried that, carried that around in my car. When people ask me questions, I have been able to refer to that. So I want to commend the district and the staff on sending that out, and especially how well-done that was. The staff has also done, and you heard some of that tonight already, has done some great community outreach with the design advisory groups, as well as some community outreach meetings. Some of our members have attended some of those meetings, and the committee is being informed when those meetings take place, and committee members have shown a desire to be able to attend some of those meetings as well, and be present at those meetings. So that concludes our presentation, but I do want to thank the Board again for your time that you put in, and again, for being so proactive in setting these two committees up. And then I want to again reiterate my thanks as a citizen to all of the community for their support in passing the bond and the mill levy, and then I always like to thank all of our teachers and staff for their dedication, so Brendan, anything?
I'd like to take just a moment to mirror some of Cecil's comments and extend my gratitude, and I really appreciate all of the hard work that the Board puts in, and more importantly, really tell you that the staff has done an outstanding job of providing us a level of detail that is just about right for us to get the big picture and allow us to get into the weeds, but not too far into the weeds. The staff is doing a great job, and I wanted to extend my thanks to them for all of their hard work.
And I should thank our committee members, because our committee members really are putting in some time and looking at this in great detail, and what I do want to tell you about our committee is that it is diverse, as well as the level of expertise in that committee is just really, really quite phenomenal. There are folks in that that know a lot about these kinds of things, so I'm really pleased with the makeup of the committee, so, thank you. And any questions?
Thank you, yeah, I was going to go ahead and open it up to questions here for Cecil or Brendan. You guys, you look like, Paul, you look like, no?
No question, just a comment.
Okay.
Again, I really appreciate the efforts you guys are putting in, it's going to be so beneficial to us and the community, so I'm glad this is up and running, and just again, thank you for the time you're putting in.
Mark, did you have?
Hi, Dr. Banks, oh my thunder, thank you so much for dedicating your time, volunteer time, to this committee, we really appreciate it. Cecil, thanks for stepping in as my Chair, we've got a great Vice Chair, and it's great to hear that our staff is cooperating as much as they are with you and providing with all the information. They are a fantastic staff, staff, put them to the test, put them to the task, they can handle it.
We know they can, and we will.
I just, real quick, wanted to ask about the vacancy, maybe, do we know how it's going to be filled, or who's going to fill it?
We have a process, but I'm going to, why don't I turn that over to Todd to discuss the vacancy?
Thank you, so next week, we're going to actually draw out of the basket again, because it was a citizen at large.
Are you guys going to draw the basket?
So the basket will be back, and I'll bring it up.
Will I be drawing again, or you guys will be drawing?
No, we'll do it Board selection, because that's how it has been, so, yeah, we'll be back with the basket. It was just resigned here in the last week.
It just happened, okay, great, thank you.
I might add that the membership, half of the membership will be on a two-year term, and half the membership are on a three-year term, so that, so that when we get to the end of those terms, it's not a turnover of the committee all at one time. It can be, you know, at least half of them will still be there for the next go-round.
Anything further? Thank you, gentlemen, thank you both, thank you to the committee for all your hard work, we do appreciate it. Okay, next up, we have Career, at 7.3, Career and Technical Education Programming Presentation, Todd.
Yes, good evening again. Tonight, the purpose is to provide the Board of Education with an update on the development of programs for the CTE Center, Career Technical Ed Center. And also, we will include the process for which the programs have been developed and where we're at now. From this point, we'll continue to develop programs and align those with the project scope at Van Buren and budget. So right now, we're in the middle of finalizing programs. The next step then, then is going to see how they actually fit into the building and what that looks like. So I'll actually be joined by two, Steve Moos and Jason, they are going to help review the process in which the program was developed. But first, what I want to do is give a little preview, so we'll do a project update, we'll talk about the development and the process for which the programs are being recommended, all the community outreach, and then the surveys that were done, and then finally at the end, Steve will talk about really the programs that have been narrowed down. So as part of the project is a design and the project update. So as has already been mentioned, the Designer Advisory Group has been up and going now for some time, and it does take a commitment, although Mother Nature has limited some of those meetings, we are picking pace up again to get back on schedule. But really, the goal is to create a building that is adaptable and progressive for all building needs, so one of the goals of the committee is to look at what programs there might be, but then not also fine-tune as so much what the building could look like for that program, but really make it flexible so any program in the future can adapt to the space. So within the Designer Advisory Group, really at the stage now where the program is being developed, we're looking at the square footage of the building, both with Ferguson going in, and then with the CTE programs going in, and now we're to the point where we see how many programs and pathways we can fit into the building. It is, you know, one of the challenges, as you see through the survey, there's a lot of pathways that came out of the survey. So how do we determine, one, which pathways, and then how do we determine what fits in the building appropriately, so then when it kicks off, each pathway is a success. And then again, one way we do that is independent of what program, it's really what the building looks like is in the flexibility. So one of the challenges that actually just left the meeting before here, the DAG that was meaning to look at this, is, you know, what does the building start to look like when you're trying to adapt something for, one, future programs, but then specific enough for partnerships that we're looking at. And that's something else we are developing, is different partnerships with some opportunities that have been outreach to us, and, you know, a couple of those are, you know, within the Front Range, the Ames, the higher ed communities, they're also very excited about that opportunity. So from there, I'll turn it over to Steve, and he'll actually, Steve and Jason will go through the process of the development of the program.
Madam President, Board of Education, Dr. Schaefer, Jason Germain, Principal at Ferguson High School. I just want to start my portion of the presentation off, actually Steve and my portion of the presentation off, just by saying how honored we are to be part of this work. And it's very rare in a career of an administrator to be able to be part of the design and building of a new space that's going to effectively serve students for a long time into the future, and so I know I speak for both Steve and I, and we say just how excited we are to be a part of it. We also want to thank our district leadership team that is guiding our work, specifically Todd, Dawn, Theo Robeson, everyone has been really gracious with their time and their expertise in extending some ideas and pathways for Steve and I to follow in this journey and this work together, so without further ado, I'll introduce our Career and Technical Ed Coordinator, Steve Moos.
All right, thank you, Jason. Steve Moos, Career and Tech Ed Coordinator, thank you for letting us speak tonight. Just wanted to kind of start out with, on the current state slide, and talk about programming pathway, the review and prioritization process a little bit, I'll be taking you through that in here in a minute. It's been about three months since we kind of kicked off with reviewing and doing some research into different programming. Todd talked about the architectural design, had our Designer Advisory Group second meeting this afternoon, and then the development of the mission and vision for this CTE Center, and that's being led by Theo Robeson, and we've had three meetings so far, and we'll have our final meeting next Monday to wrap that work up. And so on the business community input, it really started, when I started here three years ago in this position, I was really asked to go out in the community and really connect with businesses, and let them know we're interested in partnering, and so this was the chance then, when we started talking about possible programs and pathways, is I really wanted to hear from the business community first, and let them have the say initially, and so we invited really local representatives from all 17 Colorado career cluster areas, to really come in and just tell us a little state of the state about their area of expertise, and let them talk, and we just listened. And so you see a few of the companies listed there that took part. We also had, and this was on January 23rd, by the way, so about three months ago, we also had the Loveland City Manager and the Economic Development Director, both chambers of commerce were represented, and the Loveland Business Partnership, Front Range Community College, and Ames. So it was a real good meeting, we had principals, upper administration there to just listen to what their initial thoughts were. We always hear about the importance of soft skills, and I really started trying to coin the term essential skills, because that's almost number one of what we hear a lot from business and industry, what they're looking for in talent. Skilled workforce was the number one need for almost all the businesses, that was pretty much consensus. We want our students to be able to live in our community and earn a living wage, and have them be able to stay, or have that option to stay and have a career, and the business community really came out in their support of this project. I also wanted to mention, a number of them mentioned the work-based learning opportunities, how excited they are with career-wise and internship opportunities in our district as well, so that's went great, and we've had nothing but positive response so far from them. On the next slide then, is the career pathway, the data research, and this is where I kind of get in, I love being analytical, we looked at national trends, but we also, I really dug into a couple of reports, one was Talent 2.0, which you may not be familiar with, it's a regional workforce strategy for Loveland-Fort Collins region. I polled a little bit, just to tell you the depth of it, the Loveland-Fort Collins Chamber of Commerce, Loveland Economic Development Department, the Laramie County Economic Development Department, and other groups hired one of the nation's top economic and workforce development consulting firms, tipped strategies to research and prepare this report, so it's the second version of the original one. And then also, the CU Leeds Business School issued their 54th Annual Colorado Business Economic Outlook Report, the timing was perfect, it came out the week before I dug in, and they really do a state of the state on kind of what the past couple of years look like, what 2019 is projected to look like, and then beyond that, it's 136 pages, if you're interested, a lot of data in there. And so we really tried to look, could we narrow it down from those areas into high-growth occupational areas, wage growth as well, and then both recently and projected into the future, so really digging into the data, and where that led us on, and then the final piece is the student-parent survey and the business-community survey, and you do have that extra legal-sized paper document in your packet, I believe, so I kind of threw a few Excel spreadsheet charts together. Really, the last page is kind of the summary page, it's the comparison between the business community responses and the sixth to 12th grade parent and student responses. We had 537 student-parent responses and 66 from the business community, and so to make a comparable bar chart, I just took the percentage of respondents out of the total who ranked out of those 12 pathways, one, two, or three, so we took the top three out of 12 possibilities. Really narrowed it down to 12 that kind of rose to the top after all the data research and listening to the business community input. And so I don't know if there's any questions on that, welcome to answer those.
They, I'm kind of looking here real quick, they aligned pretty well between the business and...
For the most part, I think the one weakness of the business community one is we probably had some numbers, and then having some members from certain industries probably skew the numbers a little bit, whether it's a manufacturing partnership, or they're, you know, they're different, reached out to everybody, but there's some strong manufacturing, healthcare types of partnerships, construction, but I think they're fairly close, especially on some of the top choices.
Yeah, healthcare, yeah, it's interesting.
Do you have any insight on the computer science?
As far as?
Why is the business community's perception of it?
I think that's one of the areas where we tried to reach, I don't know if they're quite as organized as far as sector, and I don't know, we probably don't have quite as many contacts, I just don't think there were as many respondents maybe in that area that we weren't able to reach. We tried going out through the Chamber and the Business Partnership, and Live Loveland, and just different areas, rotaries, just to try to get a variety of business community people, but that's my guess, because that's, when I, when we talk to people, that's a huge need in that area, locally, statewide, and nationally, and that's where it's good to look at the statewide data sometimes, too, and nationally, and it's, that definitely is right at the top with healthcare usually. Anything else? Can I turn it over to Jason Germain to continue?
Okay, so our follow-up steps from there was really to engage a group of community members, educators, and business representatives, and during that meeting, what we really were trying to do was to begin to narrow the scope, or narrow the focus of what a potential CTE Center might be able to afford students as we move forward. During that meeting, we reviewed what we kind of understand as Dr. Schaefer's vision for CTE programming in the district, and all of the things that he's outlined at previous Board meetings, as well as meetings with our manufacturing groups and business community and that type of thing, just to kind of set the stage for the overriding direction of his leadership and where we're going. During that time, we facilitated a discussion, really to help narrow down the focus, like I said, of the program recommendations, and at that point in time, the surveys and some of the data we had really narrowed us down to about 12, and our goal was to narrow it down further, knowing that our budget and space allocations would not allow us necessarily to build 50 programs if we wanted to, so we had to begin to narrow. Participants reviewed the different programs who were in attendance that night using a data dialogue protocol that were pretty familiar. that we're pretty familiar with, and we were able to select their top three as a group, and then also individually as well, because we understand sometimes when working in groups, sometimes a squeaky wheel gets the oil, and we wanted to make sure that all voices in that room were heard and had a chance for their individual priorities to be documented that evening. To provide context during the discussion, we identified programs on the slide that has the head of Career Pathways Programming Committee as either an expansion, enhancement, or efficiency. And we kind of loosely define though, an expansion as anything that increased student access and opportunity across the district. The enhancements being something that might be able to add to our current practice, either serving students better or differently than we're currently able to, or efficiencies. Could it be potentially a central location for some of those high-cost programs out there? That would be more challenging from a budget or fiscal perspective to replicate across the different high schools in the district. What's, what was interesting is many of the programs did a real good job of either expanding, enhancing, or creating efficiency. But many of the programs that rose to the top did two out of those three or three out of those three really well. On your next slide, you'll see some additional preferred considerations that we included. Those were anything from industry credentials that really prove a student's qualifications and competence when they're, when they're exiting the program, to those that maximize concurrent enrollment or college credit opportunities for students, and certainly those that align with existing programs that are currently being offered with our community college partners. And by align, I don't mean that we simply want to replicate services that they're already able to provide at a high level. We really want to meet the demand of all the students in our district and do our best to find something that's very complimentary to what currently exists out in the community. When you look, moving forward to the next slide, some additional considerations for us, including that all students in our district had a variety of access points and exit points to the CTE Center. Specifically, we are proposing programs that feature a balance of skilled trades, things like construction potentially, and professional pathways that might look more like healthcare or robotics. Again, with that desire to provide opportunity for each student in the district that might have an interest or a need in being better prepared for the world after high school. The input collected at that initial meeting that I spoke to two slides ago really helped us narrow the pathways down to about seven. There is a typo on that slide. I put twelve instead of seven in there. I apologize. We, the seven that we have for you were the ones really that were most supported by district educators, by community members, and our business community. And then subsequently from that, we've been in conversations with DLR, the architectural firm hired, to look at feasibility, and, you know, there's some fantastic programs that we could offer, but that from a space and budget perspective are unrealistic, not to mention sustainability over time in the long run. So our goal is to provide programming that meets the needs of each student as they may need it, but also to be sustainable in a way that really makes this project a shining star for the district as we move forward. As you move forward to the next slide, which are kind of our recommendations, if, you know, Todd and I arm wrestle and we get all the square footage in the world.
Right, Todd?
But our recommended pathways for initial exploration in this space really are, as you see on that slide. There's certainly a demand for healthcare, for computer science, some aspect of STEM, including maybe robotics or advanced manufacturing, maybe even welding, construction skilled trades, including plumbing, electrical, perhaps HVAC education, which might include things like early childhood education, paraprofessional, or even a teacher cadet-type program in an effort to maybe help us fill some of our positions in the district that oftentimes are incredibly hard to fill. A business or entrepreneurship program, and then potentially a pro-start or catering program that might be able to be engaged in the real-world provision of food service on that campus on a daily basis. What better way to create a real-world experience than to have them serve a hundred and twenty hungry Ferguson students on a daily basis for breakfast and lunch? So our kind of next steps, moving forward from here, obviously, we're here tonight to seek your input and give you an opportunity to ask us some questions about our process and some of the recommendations we brought forth. But our next steps, in addition to that, would be, as we narrow down the pathways, begin to set up advisory committees for each of the pathways identified, and then starting to build out the courses and content and skills that would be part of a student's education should they choose and experience at the CTE Center. With that being said, I guess in closing, we just want to thank you for the time. Thank you for the opportunity and the forward thinking around serving our students, and we're happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Questions, Board. Jeff?
Thank you. Great presentation. I'm curious on the automotive, that it didn't turn out better than it did. It's something that, over the course of the years, I've heard a lot of interest from the community on. And looking at your survey, it looks like it's about the third from the highest, yet the business community shows it down low. And last year, I was visiting Front Range Community College. They have a great automotive program there. And they had a bulletin board just covered with flyers from companies looking for mechanics, and it just seemed like there were great, great opportunities there. And again, I hear it in the community, so I'm just surprised to see the disparity here.
Yeah, I think, I think part, there is no question that there are needs in the automotive sector and that our school district could potentially play a role in that. I think that as we are looking at the services provided by our community college partners, both Ames and Front Range have very well-established and high-functioning automotive programs. And in a sense, we're trying to be complimentary and trying to create some of that expansion of program beyond just what may already exist in the community. And then I think the other aspects to automotive that make it difficult are the true square footage and cost associated with getting a program like that off the ground and going. And, you know, that's not to say that there might not be community partners who'd be willing to engage us in that, but it's, it's from the, I think Steve and I, and I don't want to speak for Steve entirely, but I think for, for us, we're looking at that as, yes, we potentially have the space and ability to do automotive really well, but at what cost? Does that potentially limit the amount of options on that site by offering automotive? And would it maybe be better to seed an automotive program in the district in areas where we might already have bays and start to seed that there? One example, that might be the Thompson Valley High School space that I believe has two or three automotive bays. And if we can create the demand there and seed it, then potentially that might be something that we come back to you down the road and say, hey, we'd really like to build more automotive.
Why do you think there's such a difference, though, between what the parents and the students are asking for and what the business community's asking for? I would think if we went down to Front Range and we pulled some of those flyers off and called some of the employers there, that they might have some interest. I talked to the director over there, and he was telling me that they have people just waiting in line. Soon as these people graduate, they can guarantee all their students a job.
Yeah, I think part of that was the, maybe the weakness of that business-community survey as far as just really being expansive. I have, we have heard from individual dealers, automobile dealers sometimes, and the new thing is now as well. And another way we could possibly help meet that demand is they're ready to hire students, basically, as Lou Boiltex, and then start training them in their specific field. So Loveland Ford wants them to train, they don't want that general ASE certification anymore. They want them to strictly start doing online modules and learning the Ford program only. And so I think there's some opportunity there as well to meet that local demand in the near term. And then like Jason mentioned, at Thompson Valley High School, where there's already bays, it's only utilized about a third of the time right now, so there's a potential to start there and go deeper in an existing area, because it is very expensive to run. So I think we felt, in the shorter term, we could really see if that demands there from our students, be able to meet a lot of that demand in a variety of ways, and again, with Ames and Front Range as well.
I wonder if there's, you mentioned, Steve, that they want to train them up in their way. I wonder if there's an opportunity there for a apprenticeship?
That's exactly what we're looking at. Yeah, we've talked to a couple of dealerships already locally.
If they really need the kids, then...
Yes, because with career-wise and as we're doing apprenticeship now, it's a perfect placement. They have the facility, they have the training. I know Loveland Ford's going from twenty-eight to forty-six bays, I think, when they build across from Mountain View there. And so I think we felt like we would like to try to meet that demand in a number of ways first. And then like Jason said, if there's still continued demand from our students, I think then we really can say, hey, we know this, this demand is there from our students and from industry.
Are there any opportunities within the school district with our fleet of buses and vehicles?
Yes, exactly. That would be another, internally, we're talking about that, right? We're one of the largest, not the largest employers, so to be able to do those different things internally as well, yes, definitely.
Other questions? I have one. You have a DAG, correct?
Mm-hmm.
That you've already got going? Have you gone out, or have they gone out, to visit any similar sites?
Similar sites? Yeah, we, you want to go there? Jason, I, we both, we were able to go with the architects down to Cherry Creek, where they're developing. It's the same architectural firm. We've also went to the Innovation Center down in St. Rain, just to really look at the space. And we have a few others on our list that we'll be going to shortly. I've been pretty much going around all of them within the last six months even, but we'll be going as a team and visiting some of those sites as well.
And then I have one more question on healthcare. Can you be more specific? That's a pretty broad.
I think, and what we have right now, I'm real excited about it, that's, I'm trying to create partnerships and have Ames and Front Range both involved, because they both have successful programs and a number of different pathways. Right now, we do our CNA program through Front Range, and we're always limited to just forty slots there in the district office. So we've developed so far in our initial drawings, an identical space for each of the community colleges to help us run a program. It could be CNA. And that's where those advisory committees, too, come in, and they advise us on what are the big needs. But I'm really going to rely on those two community college partners. I'd like them each to be involved, because they definitely, Ames has some radiology, surgical tech, a little different than maybe what Front Range does. So I think it's a huge advantage for us as a district to have both of them in the facility and then to have multiple options, or the maximum options, for our students to pursue. So that will be that next work with advisory committees all set up. They have to be fifty-one percent business and industry, and that's where we really hear from the community and the businesses. What, what do we really need to go? And that helps shape the specific courses and pathways we'll pursue. But again, being able for our students to access those programs after leaving us seamlessly is a huge part of that.
Okay. Dr. Schaefer?
So, Madam President and members of the board, we are on a fairly compressed timeline in terms of landing on programming decisions. So we don't obviously expect a decision tonight, because we wanted to bring forward to you just some of our initial thinking proposals. There's additional conversations that we have. But we are in a design phase right now, and the building will be flexible, so agile enough that we can move in and out of programs. Our need, though, is to begin to develop programs, develop partnerships, design and create curricula, and then begin recruitment drive to start advertising so we can get students into the building. So while we're not opening until the 2020-21 school year, there's a lot of work that has to be done. And again, this is a huge undertaking. And so, Todd, I'm going to turn to you. What is your ideal timeline? Because again, we're going to want the board's direction and approval.
Well, let's see, it's seven-thirty.
Seven-thirty.
Yeah. No, really, in the next, I'd say, three weeks is our narrow funnel down. You know, the challenge is always, it seems like there's a lot of time to, you know, with 2020, it sounds like, oh, it's 2020. But really, we're starting construction in the next, you know, by August, September. And to do that, you've got to really define some of the programs which help shape some of the space. So that's the compressed timeframe that we're looking at, is the next really three weeks to funnel that down. So then the architects and design group can take that information and really then lay out the building to what, how it's going to fit. So the adjacencies to program, the adjacencies to Ferguson, you know, how does the site work fit? How does it fit within the community, within the community comments we've had? You know, so from that time on, is developing all those details to then start construction here in that August, September timeframe.
So you'd be looking to us to give approval of the seven, six, five, three, whatever, some number of focus areas? Or this particular set of focus areas?
Yes, our goal is in the next, really, two weeks to fine tune...
It was three weeks, Todd.
Well, yeah, it was. Well, it was, it was.
We're thinking maybe even May fifteenth?
Yeah.
The May fifteenth for a meeting to give some time.
Well, and, and we can, I think this would fit under our discussion for tomorrow's study session a little bit, wouldn't it? If we wanted to. I mean, if we, if we had time under the...
We could.
Maybe, if there's time.
If there's time, I mean, we can go through the premium discussion as we have planned. And then we could dive into more of the details of the timeframe of what we're looking at from building design to program, just so you can see how those are aligning.
So by the end of May, you're going to want action on this for us?
Yeah, so that would be, that would be May fifteenth.
Meeting.
That's right.
Yeah.
Because our first meeting is May first, so we have, our meetings are in the beginning of...
Correct, because in the next, what I was saying, the next couple of weeks, we have, you know, only so much square footage to fit this space in. So then we've got to determine what programs are going to be most successful, and then what programs are we also going to have the budget and square footage to be able to add to the building to get this to fit in, so.
Great. We good, Board? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. That's probably your, who's up next? I think you're up, Todd. Aren't you still?
I am.
Sorry, it's dark up here and I'm losing my place.
That's all right.
Seven point four is bond update. Is that where we are? Yes, thank you.
We are, yes. So I am going to invite Tammy Knower, Bond Director, up to give the bond update that we are doing monthly now. So Tammy will take it.
Just one question. Which programs are at CTE? Oh, that's two weeks out, he said. No, thank you, Madam Sec, or Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, and members of the board for the time tonight. Tammy Knower, Bond Director. And I want to first say that putting this bond together and jumping in feet-first here, head-first since January, the accessibility and to build off of what Cecil had said during the C-Bot, the accessibility of cabinet, and then to see the engagement of the board at these DAG committees, that kind of thing, is just exciting. It's really helping our teams move forward quickly. It's also evident by tonight's presentations how outreaching every project in this bond is when you have three or four presentations in a row that are all tied to the same goal of spending that money wisely, being transparent, inclusive, and the work that Jason and Steve are doing on those programs is amazing. So to see all that come together, I feel like I'm just a spokesperson for the massive people that are involved right now, between DAG meetings, committees, focus groups, and the like. So thank you for your time, and I am privileged to be able to speak to you on a regular basis. So with that, per the format that we started with last year, last time, we'll go through the expenditures total and then by feeder system, and then go into some of the details and more into the weeds a little bit about the meetings that are happening and the advancements that we're doing. So on the first slide, total bond expenditures. This has been posted to the website as I meet with the Communications Department weekly. We are trying to keep that updated. We'll have some new postings weekly, if not every other week. So the total budget, the amount encumbered and percent complete is right on the website as soon as you click onto that, that piece of the TSDbond.org. You can see there, we've also added the bond premium that's been spent so far. And like it says in parentheses, that's just for the CTE in Ferguson at Van Buren, and then the early childhood program at Stansbury. The Birth at High School feeder, the updates there, Birth at Elementary, those costs right now at nine thousand are for hardware, and the same at Ivy, Stockwell, and Turner. Thompson Valley High School feeder system, more expenditures there. Again, it's hardware from Big Thompson L. down to Namakwa Elementary School. Namakwa also includes the playground, fall surface that we've done. Hardware, again, at Sarah Milner. And then Van Buren, the big amount there is for the CTE and Ferguson programs. So that's the architect's contract and the design contract for the contractor that's been presented to you in the past. The Walt Clark Middle School, the new project there, we're also looking at getting that Sierra School completed this summer. So we have a design team on board for that and a contractor, and we're starting to work with that program to make sure we meet their specifications to modify. to make sure we meet their specifications to modify one wing of the school for that program. The Mountain View High School feeder, again, most of the costs are hardware. The Mary Blair Elementary School does include the playground again also. And then the new pre-K eight, the big number there again is for the architect and contractor that are on board that came to you previously this year. And then the Stansbury Elementary School, four hundred and seventy-three thousand, that's also for design and contractor for that program, the early childhood. Loveland High School feeder system. Centennial Elementary School, the sixty-eight thousand dollars is for the playground that's been completed. Hardware at Cottonwood Elementary School. And then Lorraine Edmondson, that's for the playground and also five thousand dollars for hardware, makes up that seventy-three thousand dollars. And then hardware down the line for Lincoln Elementary School, Loveland High School, and Trustcott Elementary. The final financial slide is the district-wide summary. These projects, roofing is apparent, those are the ten roof projects, those contracts have come to you previously. Again, we do have two more roofs that we'll be doing this summer, but they will be under the hundred thousand dollar requirement to come to the board. So that number will go up a little bit once we finalize that scope and amount. And then the security is for some district-wide hardware and initial design costs for the security system upgrades across the district. So to go into the more fun part of the bond, the financial piece is required. It's very transparent process, very important, obviously, to make sure we're doing a good job on that front with committees such as CBOC and the inclusion of cabinet and everyone that helps monitor the expenditures. But to kind of dive in a little bit to how decisions are made and who's involved, the first slide is regarding the educational vision workshop. And I know you guys are aware of that, I think Todd handed out the booklet to you at one of the last meetings. We have posted that Innovation Day booklet that's on the left side of that slide on the website again. And the communications guys had a great time making it into a flip-page book out there. So hopefully we get some interest out there and some community members can check that out. Part of that process was coming up with district-wide learning and teaching goals. And just to touch on it briefly, since I know you've been involved with that, is to make sure what the social processes, student-centered learning and teaching involves, making sure that learning and teaching is real and relevant to today's needs for the kids and the staff. And then that learning and teaching is active, challenging, and engaging. So those were some of the takeaways from that process. So we will implement in all bond projects and then of course, facilities, all construction projects across the district as we update and maintain these buildings, need to stick to those fundamentals. So the second slide on the vision workshop, some of the process, I don't know if we reported to you, but the slides kind of, or the pictures tell the story. The furniture was presented as just some new age, twenty-first century, again, we've talked about how that's kind of an old verbiage now. But what kind of environment and what kind of furniture is required for kiddos to do their best learning these days? So we had some vendors bring in some furniture. They were sat on, poked, poke-bet, notes were left on them, kind of a summary of what might work in the future as we do potential furniture upgrades across the district. We also had teams build models of that middle picture of what future educational spaces might look like. And then the teams presented, the bottom-right photo shows one team presenting their thoughts and ideas of the day and why they approached education in Thompson a certain way. So it was a lot of fun that day. The next slide is titled Community Meetings. We have a picture there of a couple of the meetings that have happened. There's the pre-K eight, there's early childhood. The middle one is actually, the presenter in that slide is actually the developer out there near the new pre-K eight. He was a part of that and was able to speak to how the roads will be completed around our site and how we're collaborating with them to make sure the rec center to the west and our fields, any interaction that we want to happen with that, traffic, all those issues were spoken to that night by not just the district or the architect, but also the developer. And then we had the open house for the Thompson staff on the bottom right. Excuse me, we opened up the boardroom and we had about three hours, I believe, where we invited all staff across the district to come in on their way home, come in if they had a few minutes. We had the whole admin building invited to funnel through and look at some of the ideas for the pre-K eight and what their design ideas might be, including exterior looks, site concerns, site issues, and also interior feel and touch for the culture at Thompson and how we could incorporate that information into DAG meetings, focus group meetings on down the line. The next slide for the design advisory groups, again, board involvement has been key to that. The pre-K eight design advisory group was able to do some tours one day. That's the picture on the top right in front of Thunder Vista. And the picture down below is also their, the heart of their school, the Stair Center that they use for eating, collaborative space, teaching opportunities, and presentations. And then the DAGs too, to understand how those work a little bit more, there is a lot of interaction, a lot of brainstorming. I think the first meetings were a lot of icebreakers and getting to know each other and what each person brought to the table. And from there, we've gained a lot of trust in each other, and the members are very vocal in what they see and feel and think these projects should contain. And again, they've just been very informative. Our designers have been very challenged to keep up with the pace. These are the biggest DAG committees that I've been a part of. There's thirty members on each one of them for the CTE, Ferguson Project, the Early Childhood, and the new pre-K eight. Excuse me, so with that many people to try to keep the group moving forward, having great ideas and still feeling vocal and engaged, has been a lot of fun to watch how our designers do that. The next slide is titled Facility Use. And that is a document that I put together after meeting with facilities on numerous occasions, other department directors and managers to determine the best approach for the projects in each school over the summer. And safety being the priority of how we get these done and secondary would be efficiency to let our contractors get the work done. The roofing projects are the most invasive this summer, and those are where you'll see some of the closed schools. But to walk you through that a little bit, in the top left are the three categories of bond projects. Red would be restricted access, more or less the building is closed for all internal and external use. Again, due to safety and to do those roof projects, you have to turn the rooftop units off and not circulate the air just due to the smell, there's not the danger that people are worried about, but it's due to comfort, if anything else. And as they're re-roofing, they also throw things off the roof, they haul stuff off, there's a lot of traffic. So it's easier to just make sure staff and outside entities are not in those buildings at the time. Yellow means some access, and we refer people to our bond project managers or to me if they do need access during the summer. Some examples of that might be the administrative staff that needs to stay in the building to fulfill their contract. So we're making sure that if they can't stay in the building, we move them close by. Mountain View High School is a good example, we're moving the admin staff to the modulars for the summer so they can continue their contract work and not be too impacted by the project. And then green, just make sure the people that are excited to see their bond work happening, it's acknowledging that, yep, we're going to be in your schools, but it won't be impactful to your use of the school. And that document is also posted on the website, and I also sent it out to principals directly and made sure they knew that if they had any questions, concerns, to talk to me or my project manager. So the slide labeled Collaboration. It's pretty much the same list that we talked about last time. Meetings continue with finance and purchasing. We have set up a weekly meeting where I do meet with finance staff. We go over internal processes through our Business Plus Financial System processes, as simple as passing an invoice through the system and making sure it's paid in a timely manner and coded correctly. And all those things for reporting to make sure that finance and bond budgets that we're tracking in our system match up as we reconcile on a monthly basis. We have the Bond Advisory Committee. Again, that just shows the accessibility of different levels of management here at Thompson School District with Dr. Schaefer in those, communications, finance, and facilities. We meet every other week and talk about the bond projects. Website coordination, I have standing meetings now with the webmaster, Greg Blair. And we're trying to come up with innovative ways to get pictures out there, to make sure meeting minutes are posted. We're still working on that process, making sure it's easy to click around and find things if you're a community member so that there's not a ten-click process to try to get information that you want. So that will evolve, we're looking at doing some videos this spring also and through the whole process. So that's, those are actually fun meetings to actually meet with people that have had ideas for so long. A bond's finally here and we can finally talk about how to implement some of these ideas that the staff here at Thompson has. So I guess to end it for board members, community, staff, I have an open-door policy. And if there's any questions at any time, I encourage my staff and myself to be accessible and continue that culture that Thompson already has of integrated approach to these projects. But to make sure nothing's left unsaid, come to my office, give me a call, whether it's a complaint or kudos, I'll take either and I'll try to spread as much information as I can. Any questions?
Thanks, Tammy. Questions, board? No? You guys are so busy. I know, I know, it's great. It's, yeah, it's like a lot to get our heads around here.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, and last but not least tonight is Item Seven Point Five Negotiations Update, Dr. Severs.
Madam President, School Board, Dr. Schaefer, Bill Severs, Chief Human Resources Officer for this amazing district. First of all, what I want, the purpose of tonight is to give you an overview of the eight-hour negotiation process that we went through, all in fifteen minutes. So before I begin that, you know, I'll go over the handouts, I'll explain everything to you. First, I'd like to recognize the negotiating members that are here tonight. So if you can just proudly stand for all the hard work we've done up until this point.
Thank you.
Also, I'd like to recognize Lisa Foxworth, who does all the notes for us. She's the admin assistant for HR. Fortunately, she's leaving us at the end of the year, she's retiring after twenty-three years in the district. So we definitely will miss her. Also, a person I'd like to recognize is Susan Sparks, who's our facilitator for negotiations. She's been with the district doing this work for twenty-five years. I want to highlight that, the history that she has going to negotiations, the support she provides us has been amazing. Also, at this time, I'm going to call up Andy Crisman, who's TA President. He will be a part of this presentation as well to help facilitate and answer any questions for discussion with the board. So before I get into the handouts themselves, we are continuing using the interest-based model for negotiations, and there's six parts to that. First, when we talk about critical issues in the past and related issues, we're still using the interest-based model, which is first, we present the story, the interest behind that. The third part is the options, criteria. Fifth part is proposed straw design and implementation and evaluation. Tonight, the work that we will discuss with you is, some items have been TA'd, and TA is a tentative agreement between the association, board, and administration, so we'll have discussions around that. Other parts of this is a proposal, it's a straw design, so it's our best thinking at this point and looking for feedback from the board. And then also, going through this process, you have six packets in front of you. So what I'll do briefly is I'll kind of go through the packets right now, just the title page, just so you become familiar on what the presentation's about and how Andy and I can kind of slow down the conversation because there's definitely in-depth conversations that necessarily don't apply, it's just the notes that took place. So the first packet that you'll see, and the thing we wanted to do is put a header on each one of them. So I'll kind of look at the header and explain that. The first packet is the two thousand and eighteen dash twenty twenty memorandum on understanding negotiation items. So those are the large group notes that took place from April twelfth. The second packet that we'll cover is the two-plus-two oversight committee problem-solving update. So that's the work the two-plus-two committee has done and in agreements that we, basically, there's problem solving, there's an issue, we kind of put our best thinking forward and move that out where that necessarily doesn't have to go through a negotiation process. The third packet in there is basically the MOU items, and basically, it's a related issue, and a related issue is an MOU cleanup. So there are some oversights in the MOU that we did last year that, a typo, small things like that, and then other items we'll discuss. The fourth packet is the part that we want to talk most about tonight is the social-emotional learning items. So there's some things we'll go specifically. There's a preamble that two-plus-two put together to move forward. And then the other item we'll talk about is the compensation items. And the compensation items, there isn't an agreement, there's a discussion. So we have a straw design that's in place for that. And the last one is pretty simple, it's just the First Amendment to the memorandum of understanding. Last year, the board passed a two-year negotiation process. So when you do any amendments to that contract, basically, that's where we're going to capture the work that we did for negotiations this year. So that's just a draft, so that's the ongoing working document. Okay, so the first question so far, board?
Pardon?
No, I was just asking, any questions before, before I jump in, before Andy and I jump into this? So I just gave an overview. So one, just a small highlight, we have a large group negotiation meeting tomorrow. It's scheduled from eight to twelve o'clock at the association's office. So we had to do some changes with the events that took place that we had to reschedule this board meeting. All right, so jumping in, negotiation items, large group. So when you flip through the first page, basically what we do is to document the work and the work we do on chart paper. We take pictures of that and put that in there. So when you go through it, it's a work product, it's the purpose, it goes over what the purpose is, you can see what our agenda was. And then as you flip through the pages, there's interest-based review, working together, we struggle when, those are all norms, you know, that Susan Sparks put us through. We talked about the norm discussions, seek clarification by, respect others by, value others. Gordon Jones presented to negotiations, he gave a update of where we're at with kind of the State of the Union address for the district, where the state is with the long bill and things like that. So he was a part of it. He kind of gave an overview of financially where we're at, and then he talked about certain key points. So those are the notes that came from that. And then when you keep flipping through it, it just gets into, you know, the interest, criteria, options. And a lot of our discussions were about the options and what that looks like. So the confusing part, I'll just point out, is this first packet is all the notes. What we did was we separated it into the parts, the related issues, and the compensation. So that's what we'll get into. So that might look confusing, I'm not going through every single page, you know, for time purposes, but just know the heart of the conversation is going to be around the additional packets. And then page eleven, you can see the straw design for the proposal compensation. That's going to be highlighted in another packet when we get to that. And then as you flip through more pages, it gets into the notes that were presented. For example, negotiation update, four-twelve, two thousand and nineteen, those are Gordon's notes that he presented. And the other thing was the school staffing details that I presented to the board in a work session, just went over the seven items, just explaining where we're at. So that was presented in negotiations, it was part of the story. And then a memo there on the last two pages, basically, that's a memo from the work that we did and presented December ninth, two thousand and sixteen, PCC recommendations for the ESS Task Force sixteen-seventeen. So that's part of the story when we started talking about the social-emotional needs of the district. So we'll put that one to the side, and Andy will cover the two-plus-two oversight committee problem-solving update.
Good evening, Dr. Schaefer, members of the Board of Education, President Ward. So a lot of the stuff in your two-plus-two problem-solving updates are things that came up where we had, where the administration and the... came up where we had, where the administration and the association had questions around the intent of the negotiated agreement from last year. What does it mean? And then when buildings did stuff, did it meet the intent of what we actually decided? So for example, we did an activity as an association, what worked in terms of implementing our late start Wednesdays and what didn't? And so there was some clarifications around Wednesdays that happened. We had what we thought was a flexible solution to elementary schools wanted, many elementary schools wanted more time to have parent-teacher conferences. Secondary schools didn't need quite so much time around parent-teacher conferences, so we introduced some flexible language last year to allow the elementary schools to have more time to, schools to have a site-based shared decision to have more time around conferences. However, there was some confusion around the language. So in the end, in the end analysis, some schools didn't spend as much time on February twenty-eighth, March first, doing all the things they were supposed to do as other schools did. So there was a solution on April twenty-second where those schools that spent more time conferencing and doing personalized time got some flex time. The spring conferences twenty-s, twenty solution is, we agreed that anything that doesn't, basically the way that the MOU's written right now is, in the spring, Thursday morning you're supposed to have personalized time. Thursday afternoon, you're supposed to have building time or more conference time. Friday, you're either supposed to have conference time, or you're supposed to spend seven hours outside of your contract time to have conferences, and then you get Friday as a comp day. Any building that wants to do something besides that has to arrive at that solution via their shared decision-making model and submit it to PCC by Christmas break, I mean, winter break. And then PCC reviews that and approves them at the January meeting. So for example, one of our buildings decided, we want to do building time on Thursday morning. Our conferences work best from twelve to seven on Thursday, and we're going to have personalized time on Friday morning. That's all the hours that was required by the MOU, but it's not in the hour, in the order that's specified by the MOU. So they would present that solution to PCC and they would approve it as a variance. Makes sense? So anything that doesn't match attachment two gets submitted as a variance, and they would approve it. So the other thing that's interesting is we reviewed a number of site-based decision-making models in the district and reviewed them again, as a PCC, we reviewed them against attachment two. An attachment two is in the handbook, and it says that shared decision-making models should be developed using a trust-based process. It said it should involve all stakeholders, including parents, including students, including classified. It says that it should have a method of recording decisions. It said it should have a method of revisiting decisions. It should, it says it should have a method of communicating decisions. And we looked over that and noticed that a number of our plans don't have those, none of the site-based plans don't have those, to wit, they don't have a method of revisiting a decision. They don't have a method of recording a decision. They don't say, now, that's not the same as they, that the buildings don't do these things, it's just that the plans don't spell it out. So we just, we agreed as a two-plus-two that the language we have in the MOU is okay, but that next year, the PCC should, when it does its charge of reviewing site-based plans, will review site-based plans against the criteria in attachment two and say, yes, it meets the criteria in attachment two, or no, it doesn't. And so we're asking buildings to review their site-based models and make sure they, that they meet those criteria. Does that make sense? Okay. So no changes to language there, just, we're trying to make sure that all of those things are there. PCC's role beginning fall two nineteen, twenty nineteen. Dawn Huckabee, our chief academic officer, joined two-plus-two this year as opposed to the superintendent. And so we thought it would be appropriate for her to join PCC in the fall. And so that, as you see, they're going to review the variances and for conferences, and they're going to review and approve site-based decision-making plans. And then the last page of that packet is the variance form that people will fill out if they want to do different conferences in the spring. Cool? So no changes to language, or very few changes to language, but some work we did to make sure we clarified intent of what we were trying to do a year ago.
It's basically giving buildings flexibility for meeting the needs of their community around parent-teacher conferences. At times when you have parent-teacher conferences scheduled all day, you know, you're not meeting the needs of your working parents. And at times, it's difficult to have parent-teacher conferences all in one day, so buildings kind of spread that throughout the week and just really meeting the needs. So the purpose of that is giving flexibility. So the next packet that I'm talking about is the MOU items. So for the MOU items, basically what I'll do is, I'll just go through the related issues. Like I said, there's small changes with the change for related issue, article sixteen dash eight point two, with the change completed during the spring two thousand eighteen negotiations, removing the minimum requirements of teachers to present in their schools prior to and after school. So that's a change that we made last year. It was still in the MOU, and we just cleaned that up. Related issues, addendum A, performance management incentive plan, remove this reference of moving the addendum to the license handbook, as addendum A was removed from the license handbook during two thousand eighteen negotiation process. So you can see with the chart that we have, we have key points of discussion, recommendations, and then the actions. So paying attention more to the right of the action just gives you an idea of what we did. So it was a removal of addendum A, two-plus-two oversight tentative agreement. Related issues, and Andy talked about that already, the parent, the parent conferences, we took that information to the large group, and in red are the changes. So when you look at page two of fourteen, you can see in the bottom, any variance to this guideline policy must be submitted to the superintendent's office for review. That's the current policy we have, and then we're adding by the professional concerns committee, which is PCC, no later than the last working day before winter break. So we took out September first, since that date changes every year. Compensation, related issues, so part of this was attracting and retaining employees and attracting employees to our district with agreement. Of human resources and the Thompson Education Association president, new employees can be placed on the single salary schedule, be up to step fourteen, so instead of twelve, we're increasing to fourteen with acceptance of previous years of experience at the time of recruitment. And basically, this is about, we take eight or more years' experience and we place them on the salary schedule at twelve. This gives us an opportunity for hard-to-fill positions, and let's say somebody has twenty-five years' experience. You know, we can't honor all that experience at that point, but it gives us the flexibility that we can do something more than just a step twelve. So it gives us flexibility on attracting and having those conversations with employees. The big thing, especially at school psychs, you know, it gives flexibility for experience that have, and it helps recruit employees out of our district, can, can as out, we want to bring in, it's just giving the flexibility there. Tuition reimbursement, clarification around the dates, the summer dates, attachment thirteen with revisions attached. And basically, that is, with the tuition reimbursement form that we had, when, when people submitted it, there are a lot of questions by the staff submitting it, so we had to field a lot of questions. So from their questions, we just wanted to clarify more what those, what those details are. Related issues, appendix A, assessment day, we just changed, took out of that, reflecting current practice with policy. I'm on page three of fourteen. When you look at the years of experience, when we condensed that zero to three to step four, we needed to catch up on some of those years. So every year, we've added years, and then next year, what we're asking to do is take a big leap and say, six years' experience starts you at step ten, seven years' experience, step, step eleven.
Should be eleven.
Not one. That's a negotiation strategy that we use, like, hey, so you're reading this? Like, step one is what we can offer. No, and then eight, eight or more years of experience is step twelve, and that's pretty exciting to start in step twelve with eight, eight or more years. So it's getting us to be competitive with what other districts are doing currently.
And I will add that that's part of the thinking around the hard-to-fill. For years, the hard-to-fill, we've said, if we posted it two or three times and we finally find someone, we'll put them at step twelve with the approach, the approval of the association and HR. Step fourteen realizes that we start now at step four, not at step one, and so I want to bump that down a little bit.
And it's extremely helpful to have Andy involved with this conversation. You know, as human resources, you know, we look at fair hiring practices and just making sure, like, there's another entity that's involved with that decision-making, because a lot of concerns, if you place somebody in, in a step fourteen and a year ago, somebody was only placed in the step ten, that's something, a concern that they would go through the association for. So with Andy being involved with that decision, it's helpful to make a smooth transition for people that might have concerns. PCC charge six, I'm on page four of fourteen, and like I said, red. PCC will monitor the progress of the social-emotional learning partnership team. So that's something that Andy and I will get into with the next packet. And then PCC chart seven, PCC will review and vote, approve any variances to the spring parent-teacher conferences schedule submitted by individual buildings at the January PCC meeting. And then just underneath, you know, it just gives you an overview. The next page, five, five of fourteen, just, just gives that the large group will agree to that. Page six, as you flip through that, that's just more of the work around the calendar considerations. It's just changing, you know, what I had talked about earlier in the summary sheet. And then as you go through this, this reflects what it says in MOU. So basically, I covered the summary already, and this just gives you any details of what that would look like specifically in MOU around attachment A. So when I talked about going from step twelve to fourteen, you can see what the other wording is within agreement, and it's just a change to the number.
That's a lot of what the rest of this packet is, is we went over the big changes in this table, and now this is the, the actual language with the strikeout in red for the new stuff.
So page eight of fourteen just goes over the application guidelines, things we needed to clean up with the confusion when employees were submitting their tuition reimbursement. Page nine of fourteen is actually that form, and then page ten of fourteen, you can see the changes of the lettering. Page eleven of fourteen is the information I already presented to you. You can see what the overall picture looks like for appendix K, because appendix K is what we use, our licensed specialists and myself, when we're working on placing teachers and hiring them in our district. Page twelve of fourteen just gives you more details. You can see there isn't any changes on that, because you don't see any red. When you get to page thirteen of fourteen, it's just the small details in red, changes the numbers from five and six. And then the last page, fourteen of fourteen, appendix K, instead of page three, it's on page four. We have a number seven there. PCC charges, you can see what the two PCC charges are. So those are changes in the MOU that we had just discussed. Okay, next packet is social and emotional learning items. So I think what Andy and I want to highlight here is, you know, we won't spend time on so much what the story, the interests are and the actions, but we had intense conversation about this, and I wanted to say, it, it lasted at least three, three, three hours of discussion. So there was in-depth conversation about that. And then when you flip to page two of ten, there might be questions about, so why is there a different font or different colors? What that all means is, the blue is what one group came up with for options, and then the black is what a different group came up with, and then red is a different group. So we wanted to differentiate that, where it's just not all, a whole group conversations, it was split up into different groups to have discussions around that. So when you see page four of ten, if you flip, after that, you'll see five of ten. And it's social-emotional learning partnership team, and that's what, that's what Andy and I want to talk about specifically. So after you get to page five of ten, you just flip to the next one, and this is an addition that we put in there, so it's not numbered like the rest of the packet is. This is the work that Karen, myself, Dawn and Andy put together. We were tasked by the large group to put together the details of our conversations, because there was a lot of work and a lot of conversations. What we want to do is capture some of the concerns and move that to action. So the first thing I'll do is, I'll just read this and turn it over to Andy, because we're pretty proud of that. Social-emotional learning preamble for the Thompson School District. Because the Thompson School District believes in providing students and staff with a healthy and safe environment in which to learn and teach, the staff and the Board of Education will continue the conversations to emphasize the importance of the work. Below is a summary of steps taken to date and plans for the future.
And so, Dr. Schaefer, members of the Board of Education, the conversation, if I can kind of provide it broadly, we talked a lot about what the needs of the kids are now, what the needs of the teachers are now, what the district's done so far to address those needs, what the district's planning for next year to plan, to address those needs, and then what the work perhaps needs to look like going forward. A lot of the work that's happened to this point has been, without putting too fine a point on it, kind of triage. We've applied, we've given a lot of temporary support to buildings for behavior support for social-emotional needs, and you've seen those charts. We provided about a million and a half dollars in temporary staffing support for people, for kids and for buildings who are experiencing lots of mental health needs and behavior support needs. For next year, we are, the district's hiring a director of student success, whose job it is to look at behavior support and social-emotional needs. And the, and the district's provided six additional counselors at the elementary level, additional dean support at the secondary level. You've seen all of these charts over time, right? The negotiations team talked about all that and acknowledged that the district's doing that work in that direction. We believe that more was necessary. So we agreed in concept in our straw design to provide an additional twenty temporary positions to support social-emotional health, mental health supports, and behavior support for the twenty, nineteen-twenty school year. But understanding that that was just throwing positions and people at a problem, we had a lot of discussion around what the options could be going forward. And we talked about options around training staff to understand what the actual needs are around students affected by trauma, students affected by poverty, behavior support, that sort of thing. So what are the training needs for staff? What are the actual staffing needs that the buildings, that the district has? What are the resources? So a lot of conversations were had around, what are the options we have? So for example, the state legislature right at the moment is talking about severely limiting the power of districts to suspend students in second grade and below. In general, that's a great idea. We don't want to have a school-to-prison pipeline where kids who are suspended before they're in second grade are doomed to a life of, of trouble with the law. But we don't have a lot of options between keeping kids who are But we don't have a lot of options between keeping kids who are struggling with behavior and who are affected by trauma in the classroom and affecting the other kids who are, the other kids in the room, and suspending them. We need some options in between. So short term, we agreed to, again, in our straw design, to fund twenty positions to help with behavior support and with social-emotional needs. Long term, we formed a professional study team that's supposed to work with the Director of Student Success to identify what are our long-term staffing needs, what are our long-term training needs, what are those things going forward, so that hopefully for 2021, we have a smarter plan, you know, and a more focused plan on what we want to do with that. Does that make sense? So we have a short-term plan of, because the kids are here now, and funding the equivalent of twenty licensed positions to help with these needs. For 2021, hopefully, we'll have these recommendations from this professional study team to say, actually, what's going to help us move forward the best is this many positions for this, this much training for that, these kind of programs to help kids who are struggling with these issues.
Also, the other part is, it's...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Communication.
Yeah, so basically, it's about, it's about communication because there are a lot of things in place that people might not know that are in place. As far as trainings that are offered, there's just a miscommunication about that. So what we did basically was, what is in place now? So it gives an overview for people to refer to. What is being planned for nineteen-twenty, and what is being proposed for nineteen-twenty, and what is on the horizon for twenty-twenty, twenty, twenty-one, and beyond? So every year in negotiations, this conversation takes place. The thing that we wanted to do and really point out is, we had one day of negotiations to address an issue. Can we solve it all that day? I think we came to an agreement that we can't, and that's why we're having that partnership as far as this leadership team coming together with our new director coming on board and kind of doing a needs assessment of what the next steps are with the district. And then Social Emotional Learning Partnership Team Charge. "Social Emotional Learning Partnership Team will analyze and evaluate existing programs and practices, review evidence-based practices to develop a long-range plan for meeting the needs for a healthy and safe environment for students and staff. This plan will have short-term and long-term goals, action steps, and future recommendations for programs or and/or resources, professional learning, and staffing." A part of the story that we talked about, there's a bullet point from staff that providing hope for support in the buildings was a big part that came out.
I should add that that was a beautiful way of saying what I just said in like a hundred less words.
It's teamwork. Teamwork seems like no work. All right. Board, are you doing okay so far? All right, so here's, here's the part to have discussion about. So the timeline is we're meeting in negotiations tomorrow. So tomorrow's negotiations is to talk about that work we did with the social-emotional so we can get a tenant agreement, moving that forward. This is the straw design. The conversation tonight will help our conversation tomorrow to see if, do we possibly have a tenant agreement going, that we can come out of negotiations tomorrow. Negotiations needs to be wrapped up by the second board meeting in May. So it still gives time for the board to have discussions. This isn't the only discussion because we have scheduled time tomorrow to cover more questions, concerns that the board has with negotiations, but it's just giving you an update.
He's talking about the compensation packet. He hasn't said that yet.
So the compensation packet. Everybody's been on pins and needles, like, just jump to this part.
Just turn to page.
So the key points of discussion, so there's eleven pages, so page one goes over the Joint Insurance Committee and the recommendations that they did and the board already approved, an increase of four hundred and two thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. Also, the para-employee contributions going up July first to eight point seven five, which is a point seven five increase. Para-employer contributions go on July first to twenty point four zero, an increase of point two five. And then Medicaid employer contribution is one point four seven. The extra-duty schedule, recommendations from the committee, review extra-duty proposals for extra-duty salary schedule. So the committee recommendations for extra-duty salary schedule, and those are your activities, those are your coaching contracts. So Andy can attest to this one. The last time we had a committee like that was at least...
At least a decade ago.
Yeah, twelve, twelve years. I can remember we had that committee for my first year that was on negotiations, so it's been some time.
So what happened is, for the first time this year in many, many years, we had six or eight proposals for new extra-duty contracts and new job descriptions to be added. So we formed a committee to review them, and they made recommendations to approve or deny a number of those, and you'll see that in this packet.
So contracts, for example, catering at the high school, dual-language curriculum representatives at the elementary, middle school, accompaniment, work-based learning coordinators, department chairs for media at the high school, National Technical Honor Society. So you can kind of read through the rest of that, but that's the work that we honored, that the committee did, bringing that forward for the recommendations for negotiations. So the story behind compensation is there's an interest, and we talked about the interest to be reasonably competitive with surrounding districts, having less turnover, having the best possible teaching staff in front of our students. The board has an interest in adding additional staff positions for social-emotional concerns. The board has an interest in sustaining new FTE, has an interest in giving employee raises. The board cares about our staff. They're passionate about staff in the Thompson School District. So you can go through that of more of the recommendations part, but I'll get to page four of eleven.
It's a straw design.
So getting to the straw design, and there's two straw designs that's presented in front of you.
It's one straw design with two different numbers.
So basically, what you see is there's a Proposal B, which is seven point five percent COLA. And when we had talked about, those are the numbers that we came up, and those are the numbers that were presented. So there were some changes updated on four sixteen, twenty nineteen. So Gordon had presented more information to us that some of the numbers changed. So what we did was we updated those proposals. So you'll see the same Proposal B with a seven and a half percent COLA and the updated numbers, so the cost of that. So the total package cost is twelve million, one hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six, broken up into the staffing positions that we had talked about, about a straw design of twenty additional positions. The para-increase is there, the three percent non-FTE budget increase. The insurance benefit increase is in there, steps and columns, which is two point five percent. Extra-duty steps with the new positions, one hundred and sixty thousand, and then the COLA of seven point five would be a six point eight million-dollar cost. And then cost of Medicaid, or I mean Medicare on additional funding, one point four five. That's the number that wasn't included in the original proposal, and then you can see what that cost is, and that total would be twelve point one million. So as you flip through, those are basically the pictures of the notes that took place. And then as you flip through more, it gives you an idea of if that is something that we TA and there's an agreement to that, you can see what the starting salary would be for a new teacher coming in our district, which would be thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars. That's...
Can't say forty.
You know, we can take that feedback. We can take that feedback tomorrow because that forty thousand dollar number would be great for starting. So somehow, we can filter something to that, and that would put us above competitive.
Might be seven point six percent. You know, it's a small number.
Okay, at this time, board discussion, conversation. Take a breather. So it's definitely a lot of information, and in no way would Andy and I want to put the board in a spot to kind of answer any questions right now. We have tomorrow, you know, time to talk about negotiations tomorrow. It's a lot of information, so taking time to process it tonight, kind of formulate questions going into tomorrow, and then we can help support answering any questions tomorrow.
But do you need, like, for, sorry, Proposal B?
Tomorrow morning at eight.
You meet tomorrow, we meet tomorrow night. Okay. But we can't.
From our perspective...
Tonight, you need direction.
From the perspective of the team, and I mean administration, association, what we were excited about about this is that we provided support for students directly through positions for social-emotional learning, provided a long-term vision for how we could support that long-term, and provided an option for how we could be more regionally competitive.
And we feel that this is sustainable going forward.
We do.
Yes, the state has proposed an additional buy-down of the negative factor, BS factor, beyond what you heard at your last meeting, by another twenty-five million-ish or so, and the mill is performing better than your last projection. So both numbers are to the good at the moment in our proposal.
And Gordon will be available tomorrow by phone. So any questions having to do with the budget, we'll have Gordon on speakerphone.
When I look at this and I sat through, you know, a lot of the negotiations, I felt like you guys did excellent work, both teams, coming together in the large group, and watching you winnow it down to this was pretty exceptional. So I mean, you know, I've had, I've had a look at this, you know, I've watched you guys do this. So I walked away from that meeting thinking, well done. I personally support the Proposal B. I guess the updated Proposal B is the actual one. I think it's a great, a great package, and it really does what we said we were going to do in the mill levy override. It's what we promised the voters, and that was, you know, we were going to become that district that was competitive by increasing our salaries so we could attract and retain. And this, to me, this sets the bar.
I can tell you, going to CSU Job Fair, that's in, you know, at Colorado State, and it's the back door of Pooter, just to see the excitement of the candidates coming in and, you know, I, you know, don't quote me on this, but roughly, you know, one hundred and seven students were registered, and we interviewed about fifty-six of them. So to see that excitement where they came in targeting us and not necessarily another district, you know, I won't point to another district that wasn't targeted, but there's a positive buzz out there. And to see that, you know, as far as the candidates coming, that number's increasing more and more. So just have an opportunity with this proposal, just seeing where the district can be in the next few years. It comes down to staff, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, for me, my main concern was the question I just asked, you know, is this sustainable? And it is, and we committed to making a difference, you know, with the mill levy money, and I think this does that.
How will this look when you translate it to the classified and the other end, how's the pay?
So traditionally, what the board has supported is raises for the association would be similar to the other two employee groups. So that would look like a ten percent increase, you know, which is the COLA for APT and classified.
So essentially, the equivalent, people who aren't on a steps and columns kind of thing, if you're an hourly...
Correct.
It'll be ten percent.
So the steps and columns is two point five percent, the COLA is seven point five. You know, you total that together for APT and classified, that percentage is the COLA part.
And I would say, I'm sorry. I would, I'm sorry.
Does that make them as comparable to the other districts as they're making our licensed staff?
We're making the same progress towards it.
Yeah, so currently, you know, it'd be hard for me to answer that question. We're moving in the right direction, but with the minimum wage going up in January twenty twenty, where it's a minimum of twelve, twelve dollars that it has to be, we're waiting to see what other salary schedules are looking for with other districts to see how they're comparing that. We're still slightly behind, you know, when we did our work for an informal home study. You know, our slope is a little different than other groups, meaning their pay range four is a little higher than what our pay range would be. But their pay range four is different than what we have in our pay range four as far as what positions are there. Meaning, you know, if we have a faculty assistant at range four, their faculty assistant might be at range seven. So that would be a higher amount.
Mark, you had a question, I think?
Yeah. So I'm really pleased to hear the collaborative nature of the negotiations and the discussions. We all have the same challenges, and we're attacking those together, and I really appreciate seeing that happening. Of paramount concern to me is the social and emotional well-being of our students, and I'm very pleased to hear the plan that's in place, that's being proposed, because I think it's very responsible. You know, we don't know the answer right now. And so studying it, you know, putting a short-term solution in place right now and working on a long-term solution, I like that approach, and I'm really looking forward to seeing that study group make progress. One thing I wanted to just kind of ask both of you, Dr. Severs and, from the DEA's perspective...
This guy.
Yeah. What about retention? You alluded to recruitment.
Right.
How do we think this is going to work for retention?
So the retention part is, when COLA's applied, what we do is we look at the salary schedule when we apply that percentage to it. So if there's a ten percent COLA on the floor, like the floor is when people are coming in, and then there's a ceiling when people get capped, you know, adding seven and a half percent to the ceiling and ten percent really helps with, you know, retaining, and plus it helps people understand that you're not going to be capped as quick as you think. So that definitely helps. But as far as retention piece, the thing that Andy and I have discussions about, it's, you know, the point I want to make, it's not all about salary all the time, it's really about working conditions. And Andy and I have conversations about that, and then we have other conversations about what the working conditions are, and just trying to improve that the most we can.
Are those positions that you've been able to fill this year, the counselors, and are we going to struggle with that aspect of it again?
So, okay, so the exciting thing is, so we posted six school psychs, right? And first, we're like, oh, you know, Charlie and I had that conversation, like, oh, and then we filled four already. So, no, no, school psychs. So the reason why I point that out is that's a hard-to-fill position in the past. So with that being, the work that we've done previously, as far as having an internship with our school psychs, that's helpful, and then we attracted somebody outside of our district, someone that I won't point to, but we're definitely excited about that because when you're taking someone else, that maybe it's not as high a salary where they're coming from, but they want to be a part of the Thompson School District in the future, that's great. As far as the counseling piece, some of the elementary, because the Medicaid dollars that we use for those six full-time positions, which are twelve half-times, the current counselors now, instead of sharing two schools, they're sharing, well, they're not, yeah, sharing what time is it? So really, they're just at one school. So that, you know, the positions are being filled. So is every position filled at this time? No, because we're still going through the posting. But just what we're seeing right now currently, as early as we are with the posting stage, it's really exciting.
And to answer your question, Mr. Seder, we've had this conversation pretty much since January or February as an association, and as well as between myself and Dr. Schaefer, there's two ways to retain staff. One way... One way is to pay them more. The other way is to make it easier slash more fulfilling to do the work. And, and so we've talked a lot about what the balance between those two things might be. And our membership over and over and over again is concerned about how to meet the needs of every kid and not just the kid affected by trauma, but how do you meet the needs of the other 20 kids in the room with the kid in the room who's affected by trauma? How do you meet both sides of those coins? We're hopeful that this process for addressing social emotional learnings will, will do that, will make it easier, A, better learning conditions for kids because we'll be able to support them, but better working conditions for teachers. The work they're done with more counseling, the work we're doing with providing more positions, we're hoping that as time goes on with that. Now, would we love to add one to the ratio or take one away from the ratio and shrink class sizes even more? That'd be lovely. I, I won't say that. I won't say that we're, we're not interested in that, but we think that this is a great step in that direction, to being able to provide a learning environment where teachers can teach, learners can learn, and that we have a, a, a plan for adapting to the changing needs of the educational environment.
You guys really do work well as a team. Andy, thank you for your comments.
I have one quick question. Substitute teacher pay, is that affected by, is that-
It will. We'll, we'll increase that pay with the COLA percentage.
So that'll be commensurate with, okay.
I should mention, we didn't say this before, but the numbers you have in front of you reflect a similar increase to compensation for APT and classified. Those numbers are not just for licensed, that 12 million or whatever it is, is everybody. So when we say we're going to, when, when he says he's going to increase compensation for the other employee groups, that money's already in that number.
So I'm, I'm hearing positive, I'm not hearing anything negative, I guess, going forward with, with this. You know, do we, do we want to do a thumbs up kind of thing to send them back because they're going back tomorrow morning before we meet again?
Another hour.
Do we want to, we, we sleep a little bit. But do we want to send them back with a thumbs up to go ahead with this proposal? What do you call them? Proposal B?
Yeah. We, yeah. So, so depending where you're at, basically we can go to negotiations tomorrow and work on a tenant agreement for that and then bring, bring that conversation back to the board tomorrow night.
Because if you're good with us moving that forward, I can put, Karen, my chief negotiator, and I can put that in front of our membership for ratification.
Okay.
But we don't want to do that without-
I think it's great.
Are we seeing any thumbs down? All right.
Thank you, Board, for your support.
Thank you.
And, and thank you for the extended time by 45 minutes.
Yeah, I, I turned my clock off a long time ago.
Yeah, I think it's at 15 minutes.
But you know, it is, we, we do need to hear, you guys put in the work and we do need to hear that, so you're forgiven.
All right, I believe that brings us to the end of our agenda. We do have, I'm throwing things around.
Never sit in that chair again.
Reminder that we will-
No.
I second that motion.
We will-
Or I'm bringing a pad next time.
Our next, we'll sit down in the library. Our official, our next official meeting is at 6:00 PM in, yeah, 1:28 or 1:32, whichever, at the school district.
We're in 1:14 tomorrow.
Oh, we're in 1:14 tomorrow, 6:00 PM. We are invited to be at Stansberry, starting at 4:00 for the open house portion. The program is at 5:00. I suspect several of us will be there. Of course, we will need to bug out in order to get to our meeting at 6:00 PM, but, sound good? I, well, I don't have a gabber, but adjourned, okay? You can make do.